All right, good morning. It is 8:30. I'll call this morning's meeting to order. Looking for an approval of the agenda.
A second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Campbell and a second by Commissioner Wayland. Further discussion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Citizens to be heard. Are there any citizens wishing to speak on anything not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move into the approval of payment of bills and vouchers.
Move approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Haney to approve.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Campbell. Further discussion. Further discussion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. We do have a recognition of donations to the Restorative Justice Program by C. Davos, S. Natal, and P. Hanson. Would like to thank them for their donations. Our item number two is the consultation and request for letter of support for the proposed disposition of public housing units located in Holly, Mullen, and Dilworth. Darrell Lee, welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for joining us.
Well, thank you for having me, special chair. I'll be requesting like six or seven of your signatures today. I hope everybody's doing well. We are here, or I am here, to discuss the potential disposition of our public housing units that are located in Dilworth, Mullen, and Holly. We have been attempting to do this since 2010. We went through the entire public hearing process in 2011. We were ready to submit our applications ahead at the beginning of 2012 when they issued a new interpretation that said we could not. In March of this year, they issued another interpretation that said we won't say you can. So what we are looking at doing is taking the 12 duplexes that we own that are scattered across a 38-mile radius and transferring them to the Clay County Affordable Housing LLC, which is an LLC whose sole member is the HRA. What that transfer would do would be to take them out of the federal public housing stock, projects type stock that people hear about, the funding source, and transfer them to the LLC where they would be operated as market rate units, except for the HRA would have a preference in its Housing Choice Voucher Subsidy Program for people moving into those units so that they would not pay more than 30% of their income towards rent. So the current tenants would all be allowed to remain in their units and no one would have their rent more than 30% of their income, the rent on tenants.
What is that now?
That is what it is currently.
Okay, so the 30% stays the same as what it is now?
It stays the same.
Thank you.
The only people who may be affected are people who are paying less than 30% of their income. The top rent level has to be at 80% of fair market value right now, and we would of course be increasing that to fair market rents. But we also would, we would transition. There are three people, two people who may potentially be impacted. We would not do any significant rent increases. We would transition. And we have given all the tenants notice. We did that on May 1st. We held three tenant meetings, one in Dilworth and one in Holly, and there were tenants who appeared to be trying to raise. And we've had some individual consultations as well. None of the tenants have expressed any concern about this. One of the things that we are proposing to do is take over the payment of all utilities on those units so that people have a flat amount that they know they're paying for rent and utilities. And so the municipalities are for sure getting their payments on their utility bills as well. We believe for budgeting purposes that this would work better for folks.
So would you just average out the utility for the year and then not for our...
Yes, under our Housing Choice Voucher Program, we actually hire a company that does utility and loans assessments and the average household of this size and this type of unit would pay this much. We just incorporate that right into that payment so that we just, we absorb the fluctuations as the agency, and the tenants just know that they have a specific amount that they're responsible for each other. The other thing that it does is reduces quite a few administrative burdens. This would be an example. We're here today to requesting environmental reviews on these same properties because of the public housing regulations. What we're proposing to do is to re-roof four additional duplexes in Holly and then to dispose of these units to have them at the exact same use as they currently are. And this is half of the paperwork. The reviews ended up being the same for both, and so we didn't, I didn't carry along the extra copies of each, but this is just one example of what's required for us to operate those units currently. We need to do maintenance wage rates. We need to do contractors' contract activity reports. We need to do Section 3 reports, and the list unfortunately goes on and on. So we anticipate by making this transfer, we would increase our revenues by approximately $120,000 and decrease our administrative time by about 75%. And we've talked to folks who did this, who got in right before, had closed that window back in 2012, and they said yes, that that was really the reality. The Metro HRA did it, and they said they went from a negative $500,000 balance in their 120 units to a positive $500,000 balance. And so everybody who we've consulted with, our board has looked at this, and we've included in our 2010 to 2014 five-year plan, we included in our 2015 to 2019 five-year plan. We've had public hearings on it every single year since 2010. So the public has been consulted. We will also be having, hopefully, our final public hearing on this at 10:00 a.m. today at the U.N. jury.
How do you make money if you're going to keep it at the 30%? You're going to take over the utility rates, and you're going to make money.
Yeah, we're using the Housing Choice Voucher Subsidy, which is Section 8, and we administer currently 470 units in Section 8. We would receive replacement vouchers for the units, so we would get 24 more of those units. And at those units, we reimburse the owners at a fair market rent amount or a payment standard amount. And so right now on three- and four-bedroom duplexes, our rent and subsidy collections from the government average $550 a month. And good luck to you if you can find a three- or four-bedroom unit in Clay County with a garage for $550 a month. The fair market rents on those are $1,200 to $1,400. And actually, we would probably be setting the rents less than what market actually was for getting those units. Unfortunately, that's the cost, but the subsidy amounts have not, at the federal level, kept up with that. So that, yeah, doesn't make a lot of sense, but that's the reality of what it was. We'd actually be cutting something closer to realistic rents. And so then our goal is to reinvest a lot of that money right back into those units because we can help, we have some curb appeal that can be certainly increased because our landscaping dollars haven't been available because they're going for things like, you know, roasting heaters and these types of activities instead.
Commissioner Campbell?
So the units that would be going into the LLC, they still, they still would qualify for the Section 8 assistance?
Yes, that would be part of the transfer agreement that rents would be set at a level where...
But they, but they would, they would be set at that level, but they, they're still, so the difference then is still covered by...
Yep, that subsidy.
Subsidy.
And so that's why tenants' rents would not be...
Right, and then, and then you said then it would allow you to bring in 24 new ones? Is that, did I understand that correctly?
Well, we would get the subsidy vouchers to replace the subsidy that's going away from the public housing. So right now, we get $50,000 a year to do capital improvements on these 24 units and about $45,000 a year from the federal government for operating. That money would be going away, and instead they would give us 24 additional Housing Choice vouchers. And then people who are eligible for those could use them in these units.
The difference between what they pay and what the rent rate is?
Yes, and a third party would be the ones who determine if the rent levels were accurate. We would have more of a public housing authority come in to make sure that we're charging, you know, reasonable rents and that we're not, that we're not setting them up too high just to enrich our society.
So the, my final question. So the, once in a while, the HRA comes to us and requests a levy.
Yes.
What you're saying, this process here would not, does not require...
It increases the chances of that happening.
Right, okay, that's what I, that's what I understood you to say, and I just wanted to make sure.
Yes. Once again, I'm not going to promise that we won't have something else.
Oh, I, I realize that.
But for these units, quite frankly, you probably perhaps remember, I think you're the president of the commission back in 2011, there was a notice sent out for HUD saying that we were in dire financial condition and all these other things must happen. And it was about these public housing units, which at that point were 4% of our entire budget and are even less than that at this point. But they sent out a letter to all the commissioners, to the county administrator, to all of our board members without ever even notifying us ahead of time, saying that we were, pretty much we were about to go under. And they were talking about these 24 units, which at that point were less than 4% of our entire operating. To date, this year, we're at minus $40,000 for operating the units. So obviously, we need to do something to change what has occurred. And, you know, we've been really happy with the tenant responses, that they feel really comfortable with this. And we've gone to each of the communitys as well, to the city council, and explained to them as well, and they have provided letters of support.
So the action you're looking for today is the approval of the environmental studies? Is that...
Two things. One, the approval for the chair to sign a letter of support for us to make this disposition. And second...
Five-year action plan?
The five-year action plan environmental reviews, environmental reviews, and the disposition environmental reviews, which there are six. And there is one addition on the environmental review for the disposition under the first page description of the proposed project. We added a census. Future known reuse of the site will continue to be regular units for people of low income. No change in density or use. So we added some HUD speak in case they had additional questions on that.
Is this something that we would need our legal review on, Jenny?
I haven't, I haven't had an opportunity to do that, but if I feel that appropriate, I certainly could.
And in the past, Plannabagerson has done the environmental reviews for us and then until we had staff in place that we were able to do them ourselves. But it's whether or not there's an adverse environmental impact due to us re-roofing and/or disposing of them.
I'll move the letter of support pending review.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the requests from Commissioner Wayland, a second from Commissioner Campbell pending a legal review. Just to comment on who will do that environmental review, I'm not quite sure what...
We've already completed. This is just you signing off on it.
I got it.
Yes. And this is, these are the materials for your review. Hopefully, that's you. Thanks, Jenny.
Well, I think if you do, look at one, they're all, they're all different.
Well, there's three. There'll be a duplicate of each of these, but there's one for each community.
Oh, okay.
Because there's one to be done for you and one for Holly.
Further comment? Anything else? All right, we do have a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
I'd also then, manager, move the approval...
Oh, well, just a second. Motion passes. I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, okay. I'd also then move the approval of the environmental reviews for disposition of said units.
All right, we do have a motion by Commissioner Campbell.
And does that include the five-year plan or is that a separate one again?
If the environmental review is of the, of the five-year plan and not the disposition.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Campbell, a second by Commissioner Gross. Further discussion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. All right, thank you. All right, we're a little bit ahead of schedule. Maureen, would you like to come up? And you have Marcus as well. Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome.
Thank you for joining us. We appreciate the opportunity to give a short report on 2017. I believe Colleen Stuck everybody in coffee and be scintillating with words.
Yep.
Yes.
He has all the good news. So I am Maureen Kelly Johnson, Executive Director of the Historical and Cultural Society of State County, and we run the museum at the Yum-Cum Center, as you well know. I want to thank the county commission and the entire county of Clay for its tremendous support, all of our efforts to run the museum at the Yum-Cum Center and to make it a community center, truly welcoming of all. Without the generous annual funding support, we would not be able to accomplish all that we do throughout our 360 days of operation. We're open all but five days. So to sum it up, it was a very good year. Due to the unexpected popularity of the St. John's Bible Exhibition, we had about 7,500 more in attendance than in 2016. Because we did a great deal of fundraising starting four years ago, we were able to pay most of the hard costs before the exhibition arrived, which is a very rare occurrence for us. In addition, we had an unexpected request by Barnesville native Dorothy Garvin of $40,000, which allowed us to retire our debts and finally start a reserve fund for the first...
Yay, that's great.
Yes. And also that then made it possible for us to, our very busy fall made it possible for us to operate throughout the winter months without tapping into our line of credit for the first time in my 10-year history with the organization. So I'm delighted to report that we are currently financially stable. We had 10 different exhibitions throughout 2017, with attendance exceeding 32,000. Three cultural festivals bringing in over 5,000 people, multiple events at the Yum-Cum Center focused on the St. John's Bible and history, and kids programming at the Comstock House, which we run for the Minnesota Historical Society. We accomplished many additional projects with the help of grants, including beginning to digitize our massive glass plate negative collection, including Clay County entries on Minopedia. If you haven't seen it yet, go online. This is the Online Encyclopedia of Minnesota history, and we put up the first, the first 16 entries on Clay County, and they've actually been very popular. They have had a following, so. We also made repairs to the Berquist Cabin and with grants purchased copies of the Sanborn maps of various cities in Clay County. We also increased our online offerings through our new website. We made great strides on accessibility in the museum to patrons with disabilities as well as leading a community-wide initiative to improve access throughout, throughout Morehead-Fargo, basically. So that's, that's in a nutshell what our 2017 activities were, and I'm wondering if there are any questions before I go on to share a few highlights from 2018.
Of course.
All right. So by popular demand, we actually extended the St. John's Bible Exhibition one month into 2018 to allow more people to see it, and that set the year off on a blazing start. We really had, when January's normally very quiet at the Yum-Cum Center, but we were, we were quite busy. In March, we opened War, Flew in Fear: World War I in Clay County. If you haven't seen it, please try to get over to see it. It's an excellent exhibition highlighting the sacrifices made and the prejudices revealed during several horrendous world events. We expect at least 50,000 people to see that exhibition, including thousands of school children whose teachers incorporate a visit into their social studies or history curriculum. And Marcus actually serves every single one of those teachers and children. I'll tell you about that. In July, we will open a traveling exhibition called Scholes: Scandinavian Spirits from the Museum of Danish America. And in October, we'll welcome the Smithsonian exhibition called Beyond Bollywood: Indian Americans Shape the Nation, about the tremendous contributions of immigrants from the subcontinent, including India, Pakistan, and Bangladesh. With three major colleges and two large health systems, our community draws many highly educated and highly cultured families, and they give back to our community in myriad ways that will be revealed in interviews with local leaders, highlighted in the local component to be added to the Smithsonian national context. And Marcus is also in charge of that committee and also in charge of collecting the oral histories of the local folks. We will have a series of events commemorating important centennials of World War I throughout the fall in partnership with the libraries of Morehead, Fargo, and West Fargo, including a very special event November 11th, Sunday, November 11th. So please reserve that date. In 2017, we really had no slow period at all, and we hope to repeat some level of that success in 2018 as well. Just a heads up that in 2022, we will celebrate the 150th anniversary of Clay County. I don't know if you started thinking about that yet or had any requests or if anybody's been talking to you. First Presbyterian here in Morehead came and talked to us because they were the very first church, and, and so they want to do something on their history as well. And so then we started, that started us talking about it, and so the exhibition that year will focus on very important events happening in 1871, '72, and '73. So stay tuned. Now I'd like to introduce our programming director, Marcus Krieger, who will tell you very briefly about an interesting project he's been working on.
So, yeah, we are doing all sorts of stuff. We got the Scandinavian Viking Festival this weekend. I just hunted an exhibit yesterday, and I'll be the bartender for the Red River Watercolor Society opening tonight. So this is just one of the pots we got boiling on the stove right now. So in the, over the last year or so, we, there's been a national debate about Civil War sculptures, mostly in the South, and we thought, you know, that got us to, it's good having America talk about, you know, what's the legacy of the Civil War, what are we, who are our heroes? And Clay County actually has a lot of interesting Civil War history in spite of not even being settled up into, you know, for, until the, until the 1870s. But among those early pioneers of all of our towns were Civil War veterans in their late 20s, early 30s. And one of them was a guy named Felix Battles. And Felix Battles was a Morehead settler. He actually came here, he was part of the railroad crew that helped build the, that helped found Fargo, Morehead, Holly, you know, and Glendale in 1872, '71, '72, '73. And after the war, they called him the pioneer barber of the Red River Valley. We've been studying him for about 30 years at the Yum-Cum Center, but we haven't really, other than me and Mark talking about him, I had the, up until this statue project, he hasn't really, his story hasn't really gone, got out. But the, the whole sculpture debate made us think that maybe he does, I, I'm also an artist in my spare time, and so I kind of designed a sculpture for him to illustrate his story. He was an African, one of our, he was an African-American man, born enslaved near Memphis. Before the war began, he somehow was free, living in the north, we assume he escaped slavery. During the Civil War, he joined, he was one of 106 Minnesotans of African descent who joined, he was living in St. Paul at the time, who joined the Civil War and fought in the important battle, the Battle of Nashville. And after the war, he became one of our pioneer settlers. And so in May, we announced that we were going to build a statue of him, and we asked for people to donate. And it started off actually as, there is no photograph of Felix Battles, but I found a photograph of an African-American soldier of the Civil War, and I turned it into a stencil. And I know a guy, one of my neighbors works in sheet metal and Lyle Lanzstrom, and so he said he would turn it into metal. And the idea is that this will be five foot eight from the foot to the head because he was five foot eight inches tall, according to his pension records and the Civil War files that we've been studying. And he said it would just take about $1,000 to raise the money. And in less than a day, we raised $1,000. And right, right now, we have $1,470, and somebody said they're going to give you a check next time this evening. I know there's going to be some unforeseen expenses coming up, while I'm not counting any money as extra until it's in low ground. I've talked to city of Morehead, various city of Morehead staff, as well as Minnesota State University staff to figure out the best place to put it. And so that's where we're at right now, just doing a little bit of final tweaks to the, to the design with the help of MSUM sculpture professor, Chris Walla, and anybody else who wants to help. But it's all volunteer work. When we, when we announced the project, there was a guy in the audience that said, "I've been working concrete for 30 years, and if you need anybody to do, to do the concrete work, he'll do it." So it's all volunteer stuff.
Yes. Brilliant. And the two places that Battles lived are MSUM, where MSUM is today. So that's kind of why we were looking at that location somewhere on that campus possibly. We're open to other suggestions. That's it.
Well, wonderful. What a cool story and neat that you've had community support kind of going forward, but that just proves we have some great people that have and are living in Clay County. So thank you for representing them in a small way. Also, thanks, Maureen, for your good work. When we had you on the agenda before, Commissioner Gross, who serves as a liaison to your, your group, spoke highly of the work that you're doing, and always we like to hear that you're doing financially better than in the past, so that's always good news.
Thank you.
Yes, any other questions? All right. Thank you, have a great day.
Thank you.
We do have a request to fill a vacancy for a social worker in child protection, Rhonda Porter.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, we have another resignation in our child protection unit. This is a child protection assessment worker. She's been with us close to a year. She is moving out of state and going to get her master's, so all good for her, difficult for us, of course, to have to fill her position. So I am simply requesting to fill her position in the child protection assessment unit. We will, we'll see, just, let's see. We will not necessarily see a budget savings this year with her payout. She was only at step one and two, and so we'd be ringing in a new person at that same level as well. We'll see a little bit of savings next year, but it'll pretty much be equivalent in terms of her replacement.
Rhonda, how long typically does it take you to fill these positions?
Well, these child protection positions, quite, quite a while. We're not seeing a ton of new names on our merit system register, and many of our folks don't necessarily want child protection assessment. This is the assessment position, not a case management position. So it can take probably, oh, two to three months, especially if we have internal movement happening. But most of our staff don't move into these positions. We're hiring from the outside.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Wayland.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Campbell. Further discussion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
All right, thank you.
All right, we are a little early. Commissioner Campbell, could you do some reports?
Yes, Cam.
Thank you.
Okay, I had on last Tuesday, or excuse me, we reported on that. So Wednesday, we did have our scheduling of events meeting dealing with the ribbon cutting for the correctional facility in LEC, and things are really coming together there. I really want to commend the Ryan and the Moore PD and the Sheriff's Department for coming up with a really good plan. I think I made a mention last time that I thought that the invitations would go out June night, that I think I, if I did, I misspoke. It's actually July 9th when they're going out. So I just want, if anybody was expecting to see something coming before that, they weren't. So I just want to clarify that date. And we're still waiting on who, who will be the keynote speaker. I think we haven't gotten any confirmation on that yet, but we continue to plan for that, and I will have some discussions with you two prior to that.
Okay.
And then, and we did, we have, if you care to see these, but I can pass these around. These are, we actually have two... These are, we actually have two, or we actually have three different invitations going out. One will be for the actual event itself, the ribbon cutting. One will be for the day before, for a media tour that will go on on the 23rd in the morning. And then the other one will be an open house for special groups that Monday afternoon. And there's quite a list of different groups that, including townships, that will be invited to come that afternoon, Monday afternoon, if, or, or they can also join us on the actual opening ribbon cutting. Then with that same day, we did, oh, I'm sorry, I meant to pass them around. Yeah, you can show them. Then the same day, then we had the Regional Juvenile Detention Construction Meeting, and that's still in its very early phases. I did ask that Stevens start to send pictures out like we receive every Friday of these current projects, that they start sending them out to our 11 member counties who are helping pay for it, so. But there's really not a lot to report there, and I guess I can leave it up to Brian to fill in if there's any major stepping stones within there. But it's, it's in its very early phases. Then we had the Correctional Facility in LEC meeting, and that is just, that's going very well. The LEC is, I mean, we're starting to talk about, it won't be long, and Furniture will be going in that building. That's how close that's, that's getting now, so. And then I did attend, I did attend the AMC District Meeting on Friday. I did have to leave a little bit early, because I had some other commitments, but again, it was, I kind of, I kind of like hearing the, the county reports, I guess, is just kind of see what, what different things are going on in each of our 11 counties in the district. And Brian, I think you're going to win that little bet you had with Commissioner, is it Nelson from, from Becker County, about who's going to have their Correctional Facility built first?
There's no question.
So I think you're going to get a free lunch or something, I don't know. But anyway, that's, I know Commissioner Wayland chairs that group, so he, he may want to speak more about that, that district meeting. But that concludes my report.
All right, Commissioner Haney?
All right. The only event that I had last week was the Board of Equalization that followed our board meeting.
All right, Commissioner Gross?
Tuesday after our meeting, I went out to Spring Prairie Township. They got some concerns about which is going to be brought up at the Planning Commission tonight, on the aggregate, some mining going on in the township in Spring Prairie. I guess we'll be discussing that tonight. There's some concerns about dust and stuff like that, so I think they're going to be all taken care, hopefully will be taken care of. Wednesday morning, I went to Wild Rice, and I forgot to check, did you go to Extension?
I had another meeting, so.
Oh, so another. Sorry, but I forgot to check with you on that, but I went to Wild Rice meeting up at Ada. If you remember last week, they were requesting $10,000. Red River Basin and the Bubble Watershed gave $7,500. And I went to Wild Rice, and Tim was unable to make that because he was in Washington, DC for a funeral of some sorts. I requested that amount, and they did approve the $2,500, so. And I called Red River Basin and told them that they did approve that, so that's all been approved, and they were very supportive of that study. Thursday, I went to that Elder Abuse, what was going on in the Yum Com Center, and just interesting stuff, what kind of scams and what, what's going on with Elder Abuse and stuff like that. And they had some very, three good examples of whose people spoke on how they've been abused and stuff like that. Friday, District Four, as we talked about, Commissioner Campbell already talked about the, it was a good meeting, and it's, it's interesting to see what other counties are doing it. Those are my meetings.
I do want to just comment on the Planning Commission concerns from Spring Prairie. We're in the process of adding a Highway Department review, a formal Highway Department review, for every, for the applications, if there are road concerns that may come up. And so the Highway Department did review the, the proposed, the CUP, and does have some recommendations in terms of dealing with dust control and road masonry and safety. So I think that's one way of adding a formal layer of input in regards to what we're doing for townships, how it'll affect the townships or highway.
Well, Agar was at that meeting, and they gave a pretty good list of what they planned doing for, right, putting on the, which roads they're going to be doing, where they're going to be doing the mining. And I think according to Spring Prairie, they were pretty well satisfied of what they're going to be doing.
Good to hear. All right, well, thank you. And that concluded your report, correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right, well, it is now 9:05. We do have a public hearing, looking for a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Wayland, a second by Commissioner Gross. We are open. Good morning, Tim.
Good morning, Madam Chair, commissioners. What we're looking at here this morning is a public hearing on a reselling request. It's another one that we've talked about, very similar to what we talked about in the past, almost in the same locations. Alan Otterston owns a piece of property that's just, it's on 50th Avenue South, it's probably a mile south of the city of Morehead, actually half a mile south of the city of Morehead boundary. It's the yellow area on the map. There's a faucet there and a storeroom, and an office building attached to it. I don't know honestly what facility it's been used for in the past, but those buildings exist, and Mr. Otterston would like to utilize part of the property on the eastern edge to put in a single storage building. You can see it's proximity to City of Morehead there. Those are the two existing buildings, and then this green area would be where the, the storage building would go. The issue that, that we have is that property, underlying zoning on that property is highway commercial. Highway commercial would allow storage building to be constructed, but when we throw in our urban expansion district tier one, which we worked on last year, and set up with the city of Morehead, it removes the ability to have storage buildings in that same property. What Mr. Otterston is requesting is that parcel have the overlay zone, the urban expansion district tier one, removed. Remaining zoning would be highway commercial, and it would allow him to apply for and be granted permit for a commercial storage building. You can see from what's up there right now, parcel up in Morehead is the one that we dealt with previously, where we removed the urban expansion district overlay. It went back to agricultural, which now also allows the placement of commercial storage This whole area, and I didn't put the maps up there, but this whole area falls in the future growth area from the city of Morehead. The city of Morehead has got this, it's an essence of quarter section. Their desires is to have it laid out in residential. Like I said, we've got it zoned, half of it zoned commercial, but in their future growth plan, they have it as residential, both single-family and multifamily residential, so.
And one, one question that came up at the Planning Commission is the properties just to the north, the, the bus bar and the marina. If they wanted to put up an additional storage unit for their existing businesses, would they have to come for a request to remove this? I mean, that was the same.
Yeah, they, they probably, if they wanted to add a new building, they probably would. And I think we talked at the Planning Commission meeting, you know, we went through this process and worked with the city and everything else, and we changed the urban expansion district to suit their needs and our needs. First time it was challenged, it was the city did a 180 and said, no, we want this to be removed. They have not said anything about this particular request, so. But that's what you have for you, is a request to take that smaller property down there, this one, and to remove the overlay district, and it would allow the property owner to apply for a commercial storage building placement on the site.
Mr. Otterston is here. If you would like to come up, sir, you may. If we have questions, you can come and sit right by Tim.
Save the good chair for me.
Good morning. Good to see you again. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant, or do you have anything to say, sir?
I have a question.
Yes.
Has this been discussed with the Morehead City Planning Department at all?
Yes, the city is aware of this, and we have not received any response from them.
Okay, so.
Relative to it.
Yeah, it hasn't come before the Morehead Planning Commission yet.
That won't come before the, it came before the Clay, our Planning Commission, and it was unanimously recommended to this board to approve the, the overlay.
Very good, okay.
Do you want to remove the overlay?
Yep, sorry.
What would happen if we removed the whole overlay of that quarter? Could we do that? Is that a dumb, dumb thing to do?
You could.
I mean, we keep on getting parcels. Here's a parcel, now here's another parcel, now we've got the in-between left there, and...
Well, it's, it's interesting because, please, this is a platted subdivision. It was planted back in the late 60s or the 70s, Marbrack subdivision. It was planted as a commercial subdivision. Been that, but actually given it two accesses. This doesn't show all of the individual lots, but there were lots planted there. It's never, ever been.
Marketed.
Marketed. Well, it's being marketed now.
But as a whole.
As a commercial, as a whole.
Right.
But yeah, there's never been any movement on it. So, yeah, we've got a whole commercial subdivision sitting there that if somebody was, if someone wants to do something, they got to come back to us and get that overlay. We've got to do something before they can do it.
Is this, is this an area where, where we had, we had set up that subcommittee to work together with the city on? Is this, is this part of that same process?
This is all part of this.
And so we had, this was an area where we elected to, at the time through the negotiations with Morehead and their long-term plan, we had elected to keep the.
The overlay.
The overlay, based on our negotiations. And there were some other areas that we didn't do it.
Yeah, areas further south, out of the overlay.
And that was finalized in January, and then two months later, we had requests from the city to come back and relook at some of these parcels. So even though we did, Commissioner Wayland and I were on that, we did look at that, you know, from my perspective, someone that's more on these Planning Commission meetings, what we met on didn't really address what the problems are. The problems are, is that, that in a, a plan, this wants, we want this to be residential. However, there are existing properties that are already set up to be commercial, and I believe, Mr. Otterston, this is not a property that you purchased, correct? This is something you inherited after a death in your family, and we're sorry to hear about that. So you're trying to do the best with this property that you can, and are kind of feel like your hands are tied on it, so. I think currently, you're using the one building for your own personal storage, correct?
Yeah.
Yep. So you're just planning on using it for personal storage. So I don't know if we've really addressed the problem by, I mean, this is something that I think we're going to continue to see requests on, unfortunately. From my perspective, I think it's crazy that if you have big buildings on your, your property as is, you're going to have to go through a rig and roll to get something removed in or, in order to build something on your own property, and that just makes me crazy. So it doesn't make sense, but that's just me.
Commissioner Gross's idea is something I think should be considered. And again, should be considered in conjunction with the city, just to make sure it's not going to mess with anything.
Because all of those properties will need to be approved on a case-by-case basis anyhow.
Yep, and I can easily see them coming in on a one-by-one basis.
Well, even though it makes sense, I, you know, in reading the report, there was something that, that even, and I think it was in your report, Mr. Magnuson, that where you stated that in our plan, it calls for us to, to work together, whether, whether it's, whether it's Morehead, or whether it's Barnesville, or Holly, or whatever, that we, we work together and, and keep in mind what their long-term area development plan is for each of those communities. And I, I guess I'm, I'm comfortable with, with this request today. You know, I think the, the fact that the city was silent means that they, they don't seem to really have an issue with it, as far as I'm concerned. And also, but I, in, in terms of the, removing the whole thing right now, I, maybe that should be something else that should go to the Planning Commission and come back to us again.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Before we could remove the whole thing, we would have to, we'd have to publish for a zoning amendment, and we'd have to have a separate public hearing. So we can't do that today, but that might be consideration for the future.
Thank you.
Anything else? Anyone else wishing to speak on this issue at hand?
Want to close the hearing?
We have a motion to close the public hearing by Commissioner Wayland.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Campbell. I don't have the facts or findings in front of me. Do I need to go through those?
No, you don't need to do that.
Board discussion, what's?
I think a motion to.
Second.
We have a motion to remove the.
Overlay.
Overlay by Commissioner Gross. We have a second by Commissioner Haney. Further discussion? Further discussion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Otterston. Thank you, Tim, and thank you as well. I'm not sure if we'll see you here before you leave, so thank you for the work done in the county. Good luck on your future ventures.
It'll be different, for sure.
Thank you, Tim.
I do appreciate it.
Yep, thank you. All right, we are scheduled for a break right now, so we'll reconvene at 9:25.
Madam Chair?
Just for clarification, the West Central Initiative could not be here before 10:15. That's why we're kind of crunching things or stretching things out a little bit today.
Oh, okay.
You're kind of wondering why we're not just boom, boom, boom.
Well, okay. All right, well, you know, if you're fine with that, I guess Georgia and Joe, would you like to?
Yeah.
That's fine. I didn't know if they were waiting for us.
Sure, you can get them when you want.
Lunch, come on.
Take a break after we ease to it.
I was wondering, I thought you needed a break for them. Good morning.
Good morning. Joe and I put together a list of equipment for both the law enforcement center and the Moon Correctional Facility. It is quite expensive for the equipment, but we are proposing at least these different to each building. Hopefully, believe it or not, we have one carpet shapewear for the whole county campus.
Really?
It's probably, it's probably, wow.
Yeah.
It's pretty much probably longer than I have. Anyways.
That's abusive. I have one, and I replace it every two years.
So that's kind of what triggered the list, too, as far as for each building. It is, like I said, quite expensive. We did obtain quotes on this equipment, not all of the smaller items. We did not, we went with what our existing equipment is in our other building. But the sweeper, like I said, the larger, the floor sweepers, the carpet shapewear, the floor scrubber, and the garage sweeper, we did get formal quotes on most, and that is the number that we're looking at to purchase those items. Some of the items, the larger items, delivery can be two to four weeks, so we are hoping to get those ordered and hopefully have them here by the end of the month. Purchases will be made all about law enforcement and correctional facility. Have they had any line items in them for? Have they had any line items in them for future purchases? Mostly the equipment is between eight to 10 years' lifespan for electric equipment. We are looking at putting into the building maintenance line item for equipment replacement.
Okay, so your total is eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and ninety-three forty-four, correct?
I'll move approval.
We have a motion to approve.
I'll add this thing.
Right, Commissioner Wayland, and a second by Commissioner Haney, further discussion.
And that, Brian, that the, this dollar amount, along with all of the other office furniture that we bought through the bidding process, that we approved in the bidding process, these combined numbers still fall within our, what we had for FFNE and our budget?
Yes, they did. Madam Chair and Commissioner Campbell.
I just, I guess I kind of kept that in the record, that we're still...
And, and also, Madam Chair and Commissioner Campbell, and you pointed out earlier, when I think Joe and Georgia were here, and you asked a specific question, so you're not asking for additional personnel, and they said, no, we're not at this time, and I remember you complimenting them on that. And how they plan to do that, and we've had quite a lengthy discussion about this, is that with this bigger, more improved equipment and having it for each building, they feel they can at least give it a whirl with the, with the personnel that they have, and I think that's really speaks highly of them, and I think that's the way to keep costs down, so that's really good.
All right, further discussion. Don't we have a motion and a second to approve the request? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. Joe, as long as you're here, do you want to do...
Yeah, yeah, I can, so, the building committee, we, we met on this south side sidewalk improvement project, we went over it. Basically, it's the stretch of sidewalk that goes along the whole south side of the fantasy.
Yeah.
And also, there's a, a stretch right around the power plant there that does not have any sidewalks. And we have proposed to do some improvements over there at a sidewalk to address some safety concerns over there. And anyway, so we, so what I did is, we reached out to a couple of different contractors, got two different quotes here. One was at forty thousand, four, four, zero, and one was at forty-six thousand, three, four. The committee has met, and I think they feel that we should go ahead and do this project. One, one minor change since I put the memo out is, we reached out to a third contractor now, the one that's on site actually doing concrete work for the juvenile center, and I would like to, instead of proving, to go ahead with the low quote today, I'd like to see if we can go ahead and approve up to the forty thousand, four, four, and then I'm supposed to meet with this third contractor tomorrow, just write down that site, so I didn't know if you were...
Joe, I have a real problem with that now, because this, these dollar numbers came out publicly, and now we're, now we'd be, we'd be having somebody else be able to come in after the fact, they, after they've seen these numbers have been in our packet.
Sure.
And so I think it would be totally unfair for us to bring in the third one now, it would be easy to undercut that without knowing what it is.
Well, these are just quotes that he received, though, isn't it?
Right.
But he's, but he's asking for a new quote, is what I hear him saying.
I agree, though, I, you know, in terms of, it's the same thing with bid openings. I mean, once, once a contractor knows what somebody is, and if they know we're gonna go with the low bid, all he has to do is go a hundred dollars less and also another one.
Yep, no, it was more of a...
I appreciate the fact that, no...
Yeah, I appreciate it, but you might be...
I see the pushback on your, on your guys' end.
Well, it's, it, it's just fairness, it's a fairness issue to the ones who have already done it.
No, I, I, I do feel that these came in as pretty fair, so to go ahead and, and...
If anybody wants pictures of the, is that our committee, either the pictures of the stuff we're trying to replace, so. Doesn't look that bad.
Yeah, there's those, huh?
It's like the front of my house.
Okay, so, I guess with that...
So, you're looking for the approval of the forty thousand, four, forty from O Patrol?
Yes, yeah, we'll move forward with that.
Shall move.
We have a motion to approve the request.
Second.
And a second, Commissioner Gross, further discussion. This has been at the committee level, correct?
Yes. I just, I just wanted to ask, I saw on the report that it was coming from Fund 19. How much money is in Fund 19?
Yeah, yeah.
You knew that was coming, didn't you?
Well, that's why I just raised my hand, because I knew you'd ask that question. What is it, about two-hundred-and-forty thousand in there?
Yeah, two-hundred-and-forty-five.
So, and we talked about that as well at the committee, that we like to keep a healthy reserve in there for a roof, or a parking lot, or whatever, but yeah, it's at two-hundred and, around two-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars.
It seems like a good buildup, but it, it can go up pretty quick, too.
Right, it's a bigger project.
Yeah, it's big, so we're kind of watching it.
Yep, and, and Madam Chair, I have to interject here, too, that, that, I'll take the blame for that, asking for the amount to be approved, because we did have a contractor on site, and I suggested to him that he talk to him.
Gotcha.
He was hoping to get it before it went public, but you're right, it's been in the packets and things, so that, so that's not, that's not Joe to blame, that's me to blame.
I'm not blaming anybody.
The function rules.
I agree with him, I'll take half the blame.
Okay, you're both half the blame.
There you go. So, no, I'm a fair face, so I, and I'll draw the, they'll do my half.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion and a second, and further discussion. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you.
Yes, just the project will happen probably first part of August, so just so you...
Okay.
But it'll take about a week, so.
Okay.
Joe, what's gonna happen to that one corner that we touched on?
Oh, oh, yeah, we, that corner over there, over by the prod...
Pinterest there.
Yeah, we're just gonna add that small sidewalk we met with the highway engineers, and they felt that, that, that it's, yeah, it's kind of funny, a little nupwork.
I realize, yeah, that part, are you gonna take the grass out of there, or...
Uh, we're gonna, we'll chop in there and...
I just...
Well, we're gonna dress it up, so, there you go. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe, I can't find it. All right, um, we...
Oh, next, this one's, this one's on.
Um, why don't we go up and finish our, why don't we finish our committee reports?
Oh, oh, I was gonna add on that, we tried to get Jim in, one of the, what was it, Vice, Vice Chairman?
I want the chair.
We ran a heck of a campaign for you, Jim, but we didn't get you in there.
I didn't make the cut?
You didn't make the cut, you know. You ran primary, you went to the general...
Mary Nelson decided to run there. Somebody rallied me. Yeah.
All right, Commissioner, so those, your reports are concluded, Commissioner Gross? Done?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, Commissioner Wayland.
Yeah, let's see, I also had the construction meetings, and the ribbon cutting meeting for the facilities coming up in July, and that, like Commissioner Campbell said, is going well, and everything's on schedule and looking good. They had to be on a yellow ribbon committee meeting last week, and there's basically some, they'll be coming to give us an annual report here in the near future, and we talked about some fundraising issues. Uh, let's see, I had, yesterday I had the area agency on aging meeting, we had that in Morehead, our annual Morehead meeting, and they're continuing to do a lot of great things, and of course, the concerns are funding issues for next year, but we won't know for a while what's happening there, but, but a lot, a lot of, a lot of good programs going on for seniors in our entire region. Uh, let's see, on the AMC district meeting, we had a, that did, I think that went well, we had a, a presentation on sexual harassment, which was interesting, we had a Red River Management Board presentation, and, and a presentation of public land surveying, which was interesting, so. Uh, let's see, I think that was it for me.
We had seven congressmen there, too.
Oh, no, no, yeah, that's right, we did have, we had a great turnout of representatives from the region there, and they, they gave a good present, they, they all gave their spiel on who was at fault for not getting anything done, so that was it.
I think you could explain it.
Well, at least they know, I guess, 'cause none of us understand it. All right, last week I had a, a meeting out with some, Tony from Pheasants Forever and Kevin from the SWCD on the county-owned property in terms of what needs to get done, so they can, it's looking like they won't be able to plant that until next spring, just because of some land issues. I had a meeting with Brian and some people in regards to the land management transition for planning and zoning. We do have a request coming up, and that, that request came out of that, that meeting just on, on options as we move forward after Tim's absence. And then I did attend the elder abuse summit quickly, just to read a proclamation. I appreciate that Commissioner Gross was there as well. That's, that's really a, a good summit. I think there was quite a waitlist for that. It shows that there's an immense need for services for that, that population, and obviously there's a lot of people that are doing really good work in the area for that, so that's something I really was appreciated seeing. That does conclude my reports.
If I can, as we pass these around, they're, they're worth different styles of these things, for the three different ones, just so you know, they're all gonna be, they're all gonna be looking just like the, the main one. So, there's, these were draft copies that were presented to us, but they will be cleaned up and look, all three will look very similar to this one.
Okay. All right, Kathy, you're here, would you like to do your, your, are you waiting for anyone?
No.
You're a little early. Why don't we take your requests, please?
I sent the history department, as you move to this transition, we know it's, Gina left quite a legacy in terms of the work that she did, and so she's gonna be, gonna be missed, but also, we know that she's in a better place.
Thank you.
Is this more of the same thing?
Nope, it's an addition.
This is the second one?
It's a second.
Gotcha.
So, yes, as Commissioner Mojo mentioned, we have the opening, the promotion director full-time position. And so, if you have the calculations, you know Gina was on a higher grade, so with the new hire, we would still have a savings even with the payout, so there would be savings to our budget for that position. We may have internal, internal interest, so we will, we will look at internal and external for that.
Questions? Questions?
I can do that separately.
I, I would, I concur with the comments about Gina. I, I sympathies to their family and to your department, and to the county itself, but I, I would, I would move the recommendation with Backfill.
All right, we have a motion to approve the recommendation with Backfill by Commissioner Campbell, second by Commissioner Wayland. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you. And then the second position is the finance director, so she'll be leaving in September. That's a full-time position, and as well, she's on a higher step, so we will still have any savings to our budget, not much, but a little, a little bit of savings after her payout. We will also have potentially internal interest as well as external, so requesting again Backfill if there's an internal.
Okay.
Move the...
Does that include Backfill?
Yeah.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Gross with Backfill?
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Wayland, further discussion. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
All right, yeah, now we'll, we'll take a break for ten minutes. All right, I'll call, go back to order.
I got one item.
Yep, Commissioner Gross?
Yeah, my report, I forgot to mention, last Wednesday I was at Highland Growth, and the sheriff's department's up there gave good reports to the people up there, and Shannon from Recycling was also up there, gave a good report. It's good to see our county people out there and giving updates to the people. They were well received.
All right, thank you. Did you want to add your, we already did that one, all right. All right, the highway now has approval of the memorandum of understanding with the City of Holly for the CASA 33 reconstruction project. Morning Eric, good morning Dave.
Yeah, we've been working on this project cooperatively with the City of Holly, as well as our Highway Tracking Committee. We met with their committee members to discuss the project timeline, the scope of work, and Eric kind of put together the real similar MOU that we've done with several other cities, Barnesville, and then even the City of Morehead, describes who does what duties and how the costlets are laid out. Maybe Eric, if you want to run through that real quickly, we can...
Yeah, so I guess, just to give a little project background, this is for about a five-block segment of CASA 33 right in the city limits of Holly there. And basically, what kind of initiated the project is the city has been working on an infrastructure plan, and they've got some old infrastructure below the road, they want to tear it up and replace that, and as part of that, we've kind of cooperatively working with them to improve the road at the same time, and it is scheduled for 2021 is what the city's currently looking for, and we, as Dave mentioned, we have been working with them for about the past two years, so we have put it in the five-year plan, and we have it budgeted for. And I guess, basically, the MOU, we sent it out in the packet, but it just explains the project details and the roles and responsibilities of each party as, as far as the project is concerned. Who pays for what, how the engineering and bidding process works, so very similar to what we've used for other communities, and I guess that's kind of it in a nutshell. Anyone has any questions?
Questions?
I think the hardest part was to try to determine at what level of the street reconstruction the county is responsible for versus the city. Initially, it was kind of a mill and overlay type of project, because the roadway's not ready for a complete reconstruct, but being that they've got the water and sewer underneath there, it did need to be reconstructed, so we discussed that, negotiated back and forth a little bit. We tried to look at what the costs are to mill and overlay versus the reconstruction. I believe that played a major part in it, and how we come together with the, the city share, about seventy percent, and the county share, thirty percent.
And Holly agreed to this.
Yep, we've been, we've sent the MOU back and forth a few times, so it's kind of been through both sides of review, yep.
Jenny has looked at this, so it's been in her office, Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, I, I think our Highway Tracking Committee did actually go out and, and met with the full council, Holly Council, on it, and through our negotiation, we, we certainly think it's a, a fair, a fair deal, and our, our Highway Tracking Committee certainly supports what our engineers have put together in terms of a fair, fair deal, so.
It'll extend the life, instead of just doing a ten, fifteen-year fix, we've got a thirty to fifty-year fix, so it's, we are definitely getting that for a bigger project as well.
We're, we're paying a little bit more than we would on a mill and overlay type of deal, but the difference is calculated to be what we would have paid regardless to increase that length of life.
It's gonna last longer than a mill and overlay, yep.
Right.
All right. Board's wishes.
I'd, I'd move approval, subject to legal's interpretation, if they haven't already, but...
I looked at it already.
Okay, all right, and I'd move approval of the MOU with the City of Holly for the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one construction project.
We have a motion by Commissioner Campbell to approve, and a second by Commissioner Gross for their discussion. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. We'll move now to our item number eleven, the request for approval for contract for temporary planning and zoning services.
Hold on, what's the way, oh, I'm reading that. Oh, you told me about this.
Yeah.
I guess I did, did I?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, and, and good morning, Commissioners. I think you heard this morning, or I guess I've recorded before, too, that, that Tim Mangeson, your zoning director, has retired, or submitted his letter of retirement, and he'll be gone now within a couple of weeks, so to be here just till the end of June. And your chair mentioned this morning that we have talked and, and thought about... and thought about a little bit about where do we go with this? And frankly, you know, we've also talked in the past about a land management office and how this function fits in with the land management office. And, I don't know, I certainly don't have a determination of where it should go. I know the simple thing is always to do nothing, just to go ahead with the same action that you've done in the past. And we've talked that maybe the county wants to go in a different direction. Maybe you want to tie this position with a land management function more. Maybe it can be tied into GIS a little bit closer. But I do know myself, the world is changing a little bit in regards to funding and zoning. And this last year, I know I've spent just hours and hours on these issues of permits or the conditional use permits and the follow-up and the enforcement. And we probably haven't done enough to furnish the personnel that's needed to do the enforcement on conditional use permits, do the drive-bys, do a check with the site permit that's issued. I don't, I don't know. I honestly don't know. But when you take a look at the urban expansion that you talked about this morning, the overlays that you've talked about, the flood protection plan and the flood plans that have been done, flood buyouts and different things, the future growth areas around the cities Morehead and Holly, and the conditional use permits and enforcement of them, and the historical knowledge that's needed for plating and stuff. And then I mentioned also the enforcement issues. I guess I think we're at a point where we should really take a hard look at this and look to the future of what we want to do. I know I've touched base with a couple of you. I don't know that a building code is the right thing for the county. But it, you know, for the fourth and fastest growing county in the state of Minnesota, why does not have a building code? And there's more and more and more people moving out into the country that expect the protections of the government, let's say. And that's what a building code is. You know, and somebody else buys that home, they want to know that it's been constructed properly. Again, I don't know that that's the right answer. I think that's something that maybe the new person has to kind of research and work with you folks as to what direction they go. So there's a lot of things that need to be considered before you just jump in and replacing the position and going forward. So we thought, as a result of that, and also Jenny, she runs a sat-in on that meeting because the two Jennys here are the chair and our Jenny, legal advice, are the two that have probably the most inside track in regards to zoning. Commissioner Mojo was on the planning board. So we just had a real good conversation about it. And I don't think any of us have a clear direction, so.
I just, I think it offers up an opportunity to, like you say, not hire immediately, but evaluate the areas where there's improvement that could be made in terms of services to citizens. And like you said, you know, that those needs have changed in the last few years. They're not going to go away. They're going to continue to be more demanding in how we, if we're wanting to facilitate new growth to the county, how do we do that? By also being respectful of what's there. You know, so I feel like, one, there are more conversations that need to be had. If we need to have a subcommittee that continues to have a dialogue, I think the more dialogues we have leading up to that, the better. But two, just contracting for a service to allow there to not be, one, a gap in the services that we do have, but two, to not burden an existing office with that responsibility. In the meantime, while we have those conversations, it's really important.
Right. And Madam Chair, one person, another person I have to mention that sat in on that meeting was, is Colleen, because she offers a lot of insight. She sat in that office for 20 years in the administrative assistant side. And she offers a lot of insight as to what we should be doing into the future, I feel too. So I couldn't talk her into taking over that office. So we'll have to work with her on that. But also, I don't know if it's fair to mention, but there may be a strong possibility that Lynn, the administrative assistant, is living down in pursuit too. So the two people that work in zoning there are maybe vacated. So we need to do something fairly quickly. And so, yeah.
Discussion.
Yeah, any discussion, yeah.
Who provides those kind of services?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioner Wayland. We did receive an invitation at the beginning of the new year from Hometown Planning. I placed a phone call to them. They're out of Alexandria. Also, SRF Consulting, who Tim Mang is going to work for, does contract with governmental entities. And also, I don't have it in front of me here, but I reached out to Eric at Highway because he came out of an engineering firm. And I asked him if they, if he was aware of any. And he had given me a name or two of some people out of a firm out of St. Paul. So there are firms around. And they, someone really listed a litany of things that they do, from long-range planning to different things. So there's, there's firms around for work on. And maybe we'll certainly bring back who we recommend. But if you would want to get your approval to move forward.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, I certainly agree that it's an opportune time for us to review how we've done things in the past and how we can make changes to maybe make it more user-friendly, if you want to say it that way, for all of our citizens when they come forward with things. But one of the, one of my real concerns in this process, you know, there are going to still be applications that are going to be coming in. And one of the, you know, we are required by law to act on these things when applications come in within certain timeframes. And we can't drop the ball. Or if there, if there was an application that maybe we have trouble with and we don't act accordingly, you know, we could see something by default happen that we may not want to see happen. You know, so we need to be careful there as well. And we need to, whoever we have needs to understand these timely issues. Where in addition to that, you know, our attorney Jenny has been, she's also going to be gone. So we're going to have a kind of a whole new, from every way is surrounded. We're going to have new people here, but we can't drop the ball. And so whoever we get to work in, you know, on a temporary basis, needs to understand those issues. And I, because that would be my biggest concern right now. Other than that, I think we got no choice. We got to, we got to act on something.
Well, you do have a request in front of you. Like I said, that after, it was almost a two-hour meeting. We felt that was the most appropriate path going forward. And obviously, we'll bring whoever we, and the cost, but the actual name of whatever firm we can find to this board to approve as well. But it's the first.
Tom will approve the request.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Wayland?
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Haney? Further discussion? I would also suggest that we do have some continued dialogue moving forward as to what the scope of that department would look like. And so I'm not sure after we vote on this, if we'd like to create another committee to have those conversations. But I really feel that's important as well.
Very, I agree, Madam Chair. And you do have a pick committee that could work on this? Or I should, let you guys decide that.
All right. Let's, let's vote on the motion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes. And then in terms of who we want to look into that, would you like it to be a pick committee conversation? I think it was helpful to have some different members of staff in that conversation last week, so.
Well, I think if you had the pick committee, they could, they could invite whatever staff.
So let's kick that over to pick committee. I don't think Dan's in here, but tell him that.
You know, my only thing with that is if there's, if there is another commissioner who really has an interest in that, I, you know, then I'm certainly open to.
Well, I really wanted to be part of that, but I'm on pick, so that's.
Yeah, I am too.
And I know, Madam Chair, Commissioner Gross has talked to me several times about zoning issues out in the county. But certainly, any commissioner should express to us their concerns so we can deal with that.
Well, I guess, I think it will have to go through pick at some point.
Yeah.
The pick committee is not scheduled to meet now until the beginning of July. And, you know, I don't know if that's enough time to wait. Tim will be gone by then. It may be important to have a conversation with Tim in regards to where he's observed gaps for services over the years as well, so.
Hold it earlier.
We'll certainly work on this long before July.
Okay, all right. Great. All right.
I guess you had a vote, didn't you?
Yeah.
I just didn't want any other feedback on that. Just kick it to Brian, so that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we do have our West Central Initiative crew here. If you'd like to come on up, please. We have Greg Wagner and Tom McSperon. Good morning.
Morning.
Thanks for coming up today.
Absolutely.
So we have your annual update.
Well, Tom is handing out the packets for your business information. Madam Chair and members of the commission, thanks for your time today. I am Greg Wagner, the Director of Business and Economic Development at West Central Initiative. Joined by, joining me is Tom McSperon, who is the Director of.
Community Philanthropy.
Community Philanthropy. And then we have also in the audience Rebecca Lynn Peterson, who is our new director, our most recent hired. What's your title?
I'm Development.
Director of Development.
Welcome.
Once again, we are here visiting with you today. I will be providing kind of the economic snapshot of Clay County. And then Tom will talk about our activities that the West Central Initiative has been working on the last year since our last visit. So in your packet, there should be a glossy figure sheet. Leave it like that. So as I usually let you know, West Central Initiative does a five-year economic development strategy. So we undergo every five years' major analysis of the economy. And then we update that annually. Commissioner Gross currently serves on our Economic Development District Board, which helps oversee that work and the work that we do in the region related to economic development. So just to cover, just quickly for you, some of the highlights, what's contained in this snapshot specific to Clay County. One of the biggest changes is the State Demographer came out with some revised population estimates for the, out until 2050. And at the regional scale, at the region scale, the nine counties, we've seen an actual downgrade in the estimates for population growth to the tune of about 20,000 fewer people expected in 2050 than they had initially expected. However, for Clay County, those population estimates continue to be optimistic. And we're seeing continued growth in the county. We just pulled out the 2025 estimate, which is a significant increase from actually an upgrade amongst the downgraded population by about 3,000 people more than had initially been anticipated in 2025. The age wave continues to be a big factor, the aging of the population. We're feeling that in the nine counties much more than at the state level. Clay County is a little different in that equation, mainly just because of the college campuses here. Younger, younger community in the metro area obviously draws younger people as well. And so relatively speaking, Clay County will be at a much lower percent of the overall population at age 65 and over. Diversity, you know, most of our growth is, that is happening, comes from people from a minority group, actually. And so that includes both births and in-migration from both other parts of the country and internationally as well. So the projections are that 10% by 2035 will be, 10% of the population will be from a minority group. And actually, last year, we were at 9%. So I think that number will be greatly exceeded by 2035. The economic trends that we're experiencing really haven't changed from what we've been seeing from when we put this newest five-year plan into place. Workforce is still a very prominent discussion amongst everybody, as well as housing affordability and availability and broadband, increasing wages for that workforce. Childcare is very first, front and foremost in a lot of conversations as it relates to economic development. And then not so much now, but indications are that the rising cost of energy is going to impact business and residents alike. Some new changes that we added to this snapshot with the four industries regionally with the most need. We just kind of clarified and added specifically what jobs in those industries are going to have the most need as far as the current need. Top posted position in education and health services industry is obviously nursing with the average salary at $65,000. In the trade transportation utilities, great need for truck drivers with an average salary at $60,000. And professional business services, so direct support professionals with that with an average salary of about $31,000. And then leisure and hospitality is another industry in need. The top employment industries and average weekly wages for the county. Employment has increased from last year, and the average weekly wage has also increased as well. Educational services saw wages stay pretty much where they are, but employment increased. And really, the only industry that saw a decrease in employment is retail. And I'm sure the commission is well aware of kind of what's happening with retail, with recent national chains closing, some contractions in the retail industry in the Morehead-Vargo area. And that's a national trend. So, but that obviously has its local impacts as well with unemployment and tax base. So really, what we're seeing, just to speak a little of retail, is kind of an evolution. Retail is changing. It changes about every 20 to 30 years as to how people's shopping preferences are. Some of the factors of why it's changing, people want the experience. They don't want to go to the big box necessarily and just buy stuff. There's still a place for that, but most of that's being done online. They want experiences. So the small boutique, retail outlets and shops would probably be what's emerging as, you know, the mom and pops are cool again, basically. Millennials need less things. The aging population needs less things and want less things. So people are buying less. That's another factor of what's contributing to the decline in retail and just national chains of carrying lots of debt and little assets. Like, for example, Herburgers was carrying 1.5 billion in debt on their balance sheet with like 300 some in assets. So that doesn't math out to being able to carry your debt service, so. And then finally, unemployment. I touched a little bit that we're struggling to find workforce. And the unemployment numbers are very indicative of that situation. We've seen kind of, we've reached unemployment levels where I don't think they're going to get much lower. Clay County in May was 3.2% unemployment for the region at 3.5. The state's at 2.5% unemployment, and the U.S. is at 3.6. So, you know, when we were at the height of the recession, the U.S. was approaching 9% unemployment. unemployment and we've seen significant drops and it's, it's now a matter of we need to find more people than it is finding people that aren't working to fill the jobs. And then poverty, just to highlight Clay County has, even though they changed how they, how the, the feds measure poverty, the, the poverty rate for the county stayed steady at 12% from 2015 to 2016. So below the national average and a little bit above the, the state average. So be happy to answer any questions if you want to formulate some questions while Tom gives his part of the presentation. I'd be happy to answer them now or later. So thanks for your time.
I just have one question and I'm not sure if, if you don't have the information and you can just get it to me, but on the wages where you have the graph by district, do you have that by county? Like, do you know where Clay County's average weekly, do you have that?
Yes, actually, the graph that you're agreeing to is all industries. And so that matches with the 761 of, at the top there. So the average weekly wage for all industries in Clay County is $761.
Oh, I got you.
No, so you're right on track with where the, the region is and right on track kind of amongst the rural areas as well.
Thank you. You have an ask?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission and my Greg. And I've given up this brief update. I'll be very happy to try to answer any questions that you might have. Uniting ideas and resources is a goal which is at the core of every program and project that West Central Initiative makes available in our nine-county region. And as we enter our 33rd year, we've seen time and time again that collaborating with the citizens who know the challenges and the needs of their communities is a major key to the success of any effort. With our president, Anna O'Shea, completing her first year at WCI, she's encouraged our staff to look at all the programs and services we offer and if necessary, change the way we do business. The comment, "But that's the way we've always done it," is not a part of those conversations. And I'd like to take just a couple minutes to give you some examples. Somehow we strive to be a resource that can adapt and be reflective of all of our communities. Rick Shera has been added to our staff and will lead the Live Wide Open campaign. Rick's available to come to your local service clubs, EDAs, chambers of commerce to share the stories that he's collected regarding families who have moved back to or stayed in our region, as well as provide consulting on local strategies for easing the workforce shortage facing many businesses today. This is one of the tools we're using and making available to communities to encourage people to live, work, and raise their family here. And we invite you to visit livewideopen.com or contact Rick if you have stories that you'd like to share. Jill Anderson's our new associate planner. She'll be involved with WCI's economic development work along with transportation and community development planning. And one of the opportunities that she's offering communities is by leading a community conversation around the future of retail, which Greg just mentioned. With all the changes recently regarding especially the large retailers, this is a timely discussion to have. The session involves a web-based session followed by a WCI-led discussion about the possibilities that may be open to your community. And in fact, she's leading one of these sessions in Barnesville this morning. And if you're interested in learning more about this, please give Jill a call in our office. She's also working with Wayne Hurley of our staff in completing a Safe Routes to Schools project in Holly that should be completed later this summer. A new addition to WCI's grant programs are the Changemakers Grants. These awards of up to $5,000 are available to nonprofit organizations, schools, counties, and cities and are designed to involve a broad range of residents to begin a planning process to address community issues and result in a plan for positive change. There's two rounds of the Changemakers Grants left this calendar year with deadlines of July 6th and November 9th. And for more information on these grants, you can go to our website or you can give Wendy a call in our office. While we're proud to expand our reach and promote these new efforts, our commitment to our current programming remains strong. Our early childhood initiatives give our children the best possible start towards a healthy life of learning, achieving, and succeeding. Greg and our business development team continue to work with entrepreneurs across the region to help new businesses start and existing businesses expand. And a third round of forgivable loans for childcare providers is being completed to help address the need for additional home-based and center providers. We know that our past successes, our new programs, and the impact that we continue to have in our region would not be possible without the support we receive from the counties, cities, corporations, and individuals who share in our vision and our mission. That support allows us to continue to address the critical needs in economic and community development. And as you begin your budgeting process for 2019, we ask would you consider continuing your support with the requirements also included in your packet? We thank you for the confidence you've shown through your past support and we're proud to call Clay County a partner in each of these efforts. As always, our pledge to you is to continue the careful stewardship of each gift and every dollar. And before I open it up for questions, just one more thank you to the chair, to the commission, and to your staff for being so accommodating when the Greg and Tom show have come up these past 10 years. One of the other changes that we're going through at West Central, Greg mentioned Rebecca Lynn Peterson is here, she's our new Director of Development. She's going to be putting together her team. I'm going to be working with them over the next couple months as a transition and then later on this fall, I'm going to retire. But again, thank you very much and if you've got any questions, I'll try to answer them or turn it over to Greg and he will answer.
Well, I'm just, congratulations to you on this change and your work occupation. I know you've done great things for the region, so we really appreciate the work that you've done during your tenure. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, we've all done our committee reports. Brian?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few things here. The, we talked extensively about the planning and zoning discussion that we did have and, and the construction meeting. Really, Commissioner Campbell said that I would add some more to the juvenile. They're just getting off the ground, really. They're doing the demo. They've got, received all the permits, the building permits that are necessary to, to move forward. They're doing, I think I forwarded some pictures too to the, all the commissioners that they had sent out on Friday. And they're doing some underground work with the cabling for wiring and doing demo work and, and they're moving forward and the, the, the energy will certainly increase over in the building there to, to get moving because they got a move date. Steve and his staff are moving out of there probably by the end of, oh, I'd say the middle of July. I know the probation, the felony office of probation is going to be out there by the, out of there by the end of July. And I think Steve's is going to be moving over about that time as well, so maybe the middle of July to the end, somewhere in that area. So things are getting changed around over there, a lot of work. And the other construction, both commissioners reported on that, it's going along very well and we're still on target for the ribbon cutting on July 24th, which is a Tuesday. And then after that, the remaining of the week, they'll be moving things and setting up for IT and hopefully Monday morning, the 30th, they will be over in the law enforcement center for opening business. And the correctional facility will be underway for the training process that's going to need to be, take place. And the prisoners will be moved in them in September. So the, the first stage will be done, but there's that training and transition, you know, there's a lot of prisoners we bring back and, and move over. So that's about on my, my report, my formal report, but the other is just a discussion point on the flood buyout properties that the county now owns, that they were bought with state monies. And we got another concern yesterday, and I'll say a concern, I won't say it as a complaint. Some of the property has intruded onto a fence that one of the, the company or.
Adjaining.
Adjailing, yeah, landowners. And the fence is, is being damaged and, and he's saying, you know, can you guys help us out to do that? So we really need to cut the brush back and do some work. And this isn't the only property that this is occurring on. And I guess I don't know what the answer is, but the, the problem is you can't sell, you can't liquidate that property that's bought with flood buyout money. So you as a neighbor have to maintain some of that. So I think we're going to have to start budgeting for some dollars and, and holding. I know Tim Magnuson, zoning, has been kind of overseeing that and Highway's been helping us with some of the cleanup and things that needs to be done. So we need to probably put a little plan together, but I guess just want to make you aware that, that those are occurring out there and we need to, we need to work on that. We need to form a plan. And I, maybe it's legislation to the state to liquidate those because there's nothing wrong with liquidating that property on a public sale back to the, you know, the, the neighbors or the neighborhood or something like that, that they could use it for playground or for whatever it is. Something needs to be done. We can't just buy this property and, and then just leave it unattended. So I don't know where you want to go with that, but we need to do something. So, Madam Chair, that.
The other challenge is that, you know, our highway department doesn't have a forestry department either.
No.
I mean, so in many ways, we have to address the fact that, you know, we have these shrubs that are growing, you know, at, at will, but it's not fair to say to highway, go chop down some trees.
Do we have a brush cutter in our possession?
Well, and Madam Chair and Commissioner Haney, that's, we also have a sheriff's work crew that if we get enough advanced notice, we could probably go out and do some brushing in regards to that. So, but the thing of it is we need to do something with that and we've let it just kind of lie long enough and now we got to do something.
Maybe, maybe one of the things that we can look at is whether we talk to Monty or somebody who, who handles that is, is what equipment might it take to do it as well and invest in the equipment. Got to be somewhat careful. I don't know, I don't want, I don't know, get too much into the weeds, so to speak, which there are out there, I'm sure too.
SWCD's got those.
Yeah, SWC. But I guess my, my point is, is, is what, you know, are those types of things something that Monty wants inmates doing because, because of the equipment you're dealing with and all that kind of stuff?
Right.
But I think it's, I think it's a good place to start and then, and then what, what can we do to help out in terms of giving them the appropriate equipment to, to work on it?
Really?
Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion?
No.
All right, we are adjourned.